Good evening. Would you like to call the meeting to order? Thank you. All right, we'll take attendance. I am here. Alan?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Greg? Michelle is not here. Jim?
Yes.
Hi. Stephanie?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Julie? Jen? Peter?
Here.
All right, we have quorum. Welcome, everybody.
Here.
I said Julie.
(laughing).
Maybe because I knew you were there and I just drove right over it. But thank you for clarifying that. All right, so it's that time of year where the second item on our agenda this evening is a holiday showcase by the Chapag Band. So I think we're going to break. See that? A meeting just started and we're ready on a break for a musical interlude. So do we need to go there? Or can we sit here? What do you recommend?
Oh, you're more than welcome to stay seated where you are. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Mark Obowitz, and it's such an honor for us to have this opportunity to be able to play a small selection that we just actually played a few weeks ago at our concert, our winter concert. Thank you for having us this evening. The song that we are going to play for you tonight is entitled "Darklands March." So thank you for having us.
All right. We'll just jump in. Okay. We're just gonna do it. There you go. One, two, one, two, three.
Thank you again so much for the opportunity to share this evening with you. I hope you have a wonderful night. Thank you again.
No encore? Is she doing encore?
No. Encore.
Um, we've only prepared that, I'm sorry.[295.14][295.14](laughing) I would have gladly have played more. They only brought that one for them, so thank you.
Well, let the record show, the board wanted another one.[305.14][305.14](laughing) Okay? So next year, you gotta do at least two.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Great job, guys.
(inaudible)
Yeah. Exactly. We could sit here and listen to music all night. It'd be fine with me. All right, moving along, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. At the board meeting minutes from December 3rd, are there any comments? Hearing none, the consent agenda item passes. Reports in recognition. The chair's report. I will say that we just had a, well, I'm gonna come to this, but I feel like I need to say it now because I had my first opportunity, actually, to sit and have a prolonged conversation with Vic, our, what do we call our technical guru, our caretaker. Really impressed with his knowledge and his, not only subject knowledge, but also his ability to basically go up and down and left and right as the questions were being asked about how do we do disaster recovery, what are we doing for network, what are we doing for this, what are we doing for that. Really impressive guy, so I wanted to share that with the board. We got, however, a long list of to-dos, which I'll cover later. But with that, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, and I'll turn it over to Meghan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So a couple updates that we have. First off, we have two trips going to New York City. We have one happening on January 4th to El Museo de Barrio and one on January 19th, going to something much easier to pronounce. Um, oh, where's she taking them to? Brooklyn Museum of Art. I got all of those. So this is one in which, as you know, our policy, this is not for approval, but just notification, so I wanted to make certain, I kept you abreast of that. Our next PTO executive meeting is on January 9th. Our main topic of conversation will be about building use during off-hours, making certain that we're being fiscally responsible while still making certain we feel like a community-based school, so making sure we're balancing those two things. As you know, this is the season of tons of events. I can tell you right now that your Saturday update would really just be all of the festivities that are coming up, but just to say congratulations to Chapag, their holiday bazaar was a success. And in talking with students that are both current and past students, they talked about how the preparation for this event was really a way that drew them closer to their peers, created and bonded some friendships, and I was having some conversations with teachers who were talking about how many classes sometimes our students have to meet because they go to these athletic events and how, you know, it's great, our soccer team went so far, but look, those were extra classes we had to figure out how to make up for, and their statement was, but this is one event we never mind students missing class for because it truly builds community. And I thought, what a testament, you know? We get to enjoy the evening, but they've spent the day getting closer. Middle and high school music concerts were well-attended. Again, thank you to Mark and Jill Carbone for their efforts. We got to see a little bit of Mark's talent and how far he's brought our band and to know that he's only a year in and he's really, right now, running this program, I think, is a testament to who he is. This week, our students from Chapag are going to Washington Primary for the Holidays Around the World event, another way that our students continuously give unto each other and support one another. I think it's great when you have the elementary kids who have stars in their eyes because these famous high school kids are coming to help them out. It is a very big deal. And also, those same types of events are held at Burnham and Booth, so it's good to know that there's some consistency and it brings a lot of joy to our students. Congratulations to Lisa Holmes, who celebrated her 2018 Teacher of the Year recognition at the Bushnell in Hartford. Every single district sends their Teacher of the Year, and we was very proud to have her represent us. And again, every time that somebody went across the stage, she would hit me and say, it's another special education teacher, so she was quite proud of her colleagues and knowing the difference that they make for our students is outstanding. And we, of course, all of the other great community events that have happened, the sing-alongs, the breakfast with Santas, were all fantastic, but I think one of that I want to highlight is Booth Freeze received a $2,000 donation to their Ben's Bells Kindness Project. They will also receive a mural, so one like you see at Washington Primary School, they're only $500 away from their goal, but to know that right now the community is giving and supporting and, you know, we talk all about our character, what we're trying to develop, and kindness is always on the forefront, so quite proud of those things. CAE, we have the lobbying conference. If anybody has any questions, definitely talk to Michelle Gora, she will talk to you a lot about the CAE on the Hill Initiative, in which they have picked the five policies that they're really pushing for to get towards legislation. I also invite you all, I sent an email this afternoon, there's a legislative breakfast on January 15th, I hope you are able to join me in that. Let's see. Thank you to Kim Gallo, Michelle Gora, Darden, Jared, and Matt, three students who attended the High School Reimagined Conference with me on December 10th. This is the opportunity where students talk about how they want to change high schools, how they want to take away some of the traditional education constructs that would really open up opportunities. And what our students talked about the most was having more flexibility in their schedules, choosing things that they want to learn about. They kind of wanted a situation where most of their prerequisite classes, the core classes, things that they, I'm going to quote them, "have to take," happen during the earlier part of their high school career, and it really opens up more electives for their senior year. They also talked about really wanting some of their experiences that happen beyond the school day to count for their graduation because some of them are pursuing interests like robotics that are doing it beyond the school day. And yes, you know, we often talk about our scholar athletes and, you know, what, you know, they're constantly working out and fitness is part of their, part of their lives, and they still have to take PE classes, but it's not to undermine some of the students who are building their own computers, the students who are learning a language on their own and really wanting us to validate some of those efforts. So it was a fantastic conversation. We left them with a promise that we would explore, that we would, I think it was Get Mad, which was make a difference. So as long as you're mad, you're making a difference, but it was one, I think, when you put a student's voice behind it, it gives you a little bit more of a charge on what we may need to do in the future. The drama production of Picasso at La Pina Gil this past weekend was amazing. It was Tim DeRosa's first directorial debut with us, and he really took that group of 11 students and made them do wonderful things, and anybody who went, they actually created a black box theater. And there were things that stopped me in my tracks. I can tell you that when Don was walking me past and I saw some bottles of alcohol, I can tell you I personally sniffed every single bottle of alcohol and can tell you it was grape juice or water. But I applaud the students for really just embodying those characters and doing a great job with it. I want to share some personnel things. Amy Tassani is expecting, sorry, I thought you were gonna fall, so, expecting her child. So Kathy Quella is working to secure a long-term substitute to cover the fifth-grade classroom at Booth Free. And also, we've worked to hire the primary educational assistant, and I will share that name with you at our next meeting. More than all of the updates, I do want to say thank you to you all for making my transition as smooth as possible. The support you've given me is just, there are no words to express the gift that you have given me, allowing me to be here in this region with all of you and to work with our children. So, happy holidays and thank you, and at the new year, I'm not new anymore, so you can be much meaner.
Any questions for Meghan?
Actually, I have one. The, what you talked about with Getting Mad, some of the things that the students were asking, like using basically life credits, if you will, to satisfy all the requirements. How much of that, where does our discretion stop in the state is required to get in? Do we have any leeway? Simply yes or no?
That is a, no, and Teresa's gonna talk a lot more about that when we talk about the graduation expectations for 2023. So the easy explanation is, they have requirements, we have to honor and work with those requirements. But you are right, we do need work.
Yep.
Yep, exactly.
Can I just pick you back up a bit?
Yeah.
And I'm so not saying this because it's my child, but I will just say that my daughter as a senior is taking a VHS class, and I actually shared this with Kim too, where she was doing an internship for an elementary school teacher, and she was, she's been working with the kindergarten class at Washington Primary School. So it's been a really great opportunity for her to have a hands-on experience, to really get a sense of what she wants to do when she goes to college, and I think that that's a perfect example of a way to be able to extend the opportunities within our classroom and still be able to let students have an experience. So I just think that that's a perfect example for me personally, knowing that she's really excited now, knowing what she wants to do, so.
Anyone else?
And good choice on career choices.
All right, moving along to committee reports. So I'll kind of pick up where I left off earlier about the digital committee. There is, Meghan commissioned an audit of our policies. All policies or just the digital ones?
No, all of them.
All of them, right?
Ben's divided.
Right. All right. And that's going to be completed the end of this, well, you know, this week, all right, I was gonna say this month, but it's not quite yet, but this week. So we'll have, based on that, we'll be able to take what comes out of that and prioritize the list of the digital policies. Again, those are policies that have to do with compliance, you know, from things like copyright, intellectual property. There's new laws that the states passed that we have to flow down to our vendors who provide us with software, like Google, for example, and anybody else who's putting software in our network. There are, it's constantly moving, so we're looking at data protection, data privacy, you know, disaster recovery, business continuity, there's a long list of to-dos there. So we'll get that prioritized, and then we were talking about just basically how to start to tackle one at a time, starting with the most important ones like data protection, data privacy, and security. So, Michael.
Is this an extension of what the policy committee already does through CAE?
It's not an extension of, but it's the same thing. So when we put together the committee, and Michelle is not here tonight, but she would tell you, she's on the digital committee, and when we started talking about this, we said that as it relates to the policies that have to do with the technology, digital, that we let the digital committee act as the policy committee, right? That we would work policies, we're pulling them off of CAE, the same thing that Michelle's doing, right? Talk through the changes, and then the digital committee would then present, rather than the policy committee, present to the board its first reading, second readings. So we're kind of like, it's the same playbook, just a different cast of characters. And to the extent that you think about the finance committee, there are a number of policies that we have that are business-oriented, you know, that are probably, could be handled by the finance committee rather than, again, by the policy committee, because we know the policy committee is, there's a lot to sift through, right? There's constant updates and trying to figure out what's important and trying to be everywhere at once, and so this way, if we could divide and conquer a little bit, by saying, you know, and kind of moving the responsibilities out to the respective committees, we got a better chance of just keeping up on everything and lessening the load on the policy committee. So that's the thinking. Yeah, please.
And I think during the internal, Teresa knows these inside, outside, upside down, she's battled and wrestled with them, the policies. I think for a lot of us, the practice in making certain that there's not only the alignment, but are the policies that may have been from 1999, just making certain that we have relevance in it. So, you know, just dusting off things, looking it over, gives us that sense of, are we in alignment, and if there's misalignment, how do we fix that? Or if there are things that we need, if there's additional wording that is necessary, it'd be nice for us to come to you with some of that need versus just reviewing where CAE is.
And in case you're wondering, there's still plenty of work for the policy committee because when you look at the long list of policies that we have, not everything fits into those few buckets that I mentioned. There's a lot left, so it's sort of, in the end, there's still a ton of work to do, we still need a policy committee. And the last comment on that is the bylaws. I mentioned in the last meeting that we'll be looking, starting to, the executive committee, after our presentation tonight with the superintendent's evaluation process, we'd like to move our attention to start looking at the bylaws. And so the executive committee would be responsible for the bylaws, so again, we don't have to put that burden on the policy committee. Michelle's not here, so Mike, you have the floor, Ed, the Ed Committee. Anything?
Actually, no update. Our last education committee meeting was canceled, so more to come in the new year.
Okay. And I've already spoken, so Greg, facilities?
Yeah. Facilities committee. The facilities committee met this evening, and we basically talked about two things of critical importance. One of them is the roof. I did speak at length, reported to them on a discussion I had at length with Garland, with the representative of Garland, who is working with us on this roof for Chapag Valley School. And I am more convinced than ever that the method that they have proposed makes eminent sense, that the million, was it, $1,330,000 if we were to execute it this year, a little bit more if we execute it next year, plan for rehabilitating the roof rather than replacing it. Ultimately, there were a couple of things, and I won't bore you with the long discussion, which went into how our roof is constructed, what they're planning to do to solve this problem, but one of the things this method will give us for the first time, something we've never had, which is a completely sealed with no seam, a seamless roof over this building that this renovation will accomplish. But the thing that really did it for me is the fact that we have three choices. We can do a million, a million four hundred, I'll call it $1,400,000 renovation of the roof, we can do a three and a half to $4 million adding a second roof on the building, a new roof on top of the existing roof, or we can spend $5 to $6 million to redo a new roof all the way down to the deck. First thing that comes up is, why would you take 180,000 square feet of insulation that we have in our roof, of which about 2,000 square feet is wet that we're proposing to cut out and remove, why would you take the rest of it and put it in a dumpster along with the entire roof surface? You're talking about an enormous waste stream that would be done for very little purpose and very little reason. So this is actually a much greener approach to do this, and it basically makes use of what we have, which is a very good roof, most of it's in reasonably good condition. It's the surface, it's the mineral surface that's the problem, and this is what's leading. When that mineral surface is retreated in areas and left gaps and left seams that have opened up, it wets the insulation, but it also opens the roof to penetration from UV radiation, and what that does is it causes the roof to move. And when it moves, it pulls it away from structures that are penetrating the roof and the parapets and other things. So that's part of the reason why we're seeing this deterioration, and, you know, we need to have something that's gonna work for a long time. If we were to put a second roof on and spend the $3.5 to $4 million, what's gonna happen with that is, that's gonna be the last roof you can put on top, because like your house, you can put your first layer of asphalt shingles, you can put another layer on top, and a third layer on top, but after that, you gotta clear it all off and go back and start over. You get two roofs with this kind of roof, our original, our existing roof and the new one they would put on. After that, you have to take it off and start with a brand-new roof. So over a 20-year period, you're gonna get that 20-year guarantee. Over 20 years, you're gonna spend $4 million to put a second roof on, then you're gonna spend $6 million to replace that. So over 20 years, you're gonna spend $10 million on the roof, as opposed to what we're proposing, which is over probably 15 years, you're gonna spend a million and a half to repair and then resurface. And then at the end of that, you'll have to spend another million and a half to put another one at the end of 15 years. So over 20 years, you will have spent $3 million, or you could spend $10 million. So it makes a lot more sense from an economic perspective to do the renovation. And then the reason why the redo is so much more than the second roof is because when you go back to the original, down to the deck and do a complete re-roofing, you have to bring the R-value up to current code, and that means you have to add a pile of insulation to the top of it, which means every parapet on the corners, all the building parapets around the building have to be raised to accommodate the deeper roof. So basically, it's $4 million for the new roof and $2 million for construction to the building, to make the building able to take the new code-compliant roof. That's why that process is ugly and expensive, and at the end of the day, you don't get anything for it, because at the end of the day, you're gonna have to do it again. And so this system of renovating the roof is something we could do for a considerable period of time at a much lower cost. The way the warranty works is you only get a 10-year warranty, you don't get the 20-year warranty you get with the roof. It's a five-and-five. After five years, they come out and look, and then if you've complied with your maintenance obligations, you get another five years. If you haven't, you're gonna have to fix what you didn't comply with. Why do we think it'll last 15 years? Well, Don will tell you that the roof on WPS over the main part of the building, not the part that has to be replaced, but the main part of the building, is a 1988 roof. It's being maintained, at least since he's been here, so for 20 years in, we started maintaining that roof. It's now 30 years old, and it could conceivably go to 40 or perhaps longer. Why? Because it's properly maintained. And that's something, if we do it with this building roof, we have a strong feeling we'll be able to get at least 15 years out of one of these renovation jobs. So that's why it's important to do. Can we play around with it into next year? Yes. But at some point in time, the thing that's gonna drive the bus of when is if you wait too long after the repair, you may end up getting to the point where you gotta completely replace it. So you can't wait too long. How long can you wait? You could probably wait a year. But here's where the difficulty is. You need to pull the string at the right time on a referendum in order to get the roof installed during the summer. It's gotta be done during the summer. Why? Have you ever seen what pouring all that tar and roofing felt together does to, I mean, it stinks to high heavens in this building, you don't want people in it when it's being done. So if you pull the string for a referendum and you do it in March or April of this coming year, you could get the roof started probably in the summer, but it might be tricky. So that may be the ultimate thing. So then if you can't do it in the summer, the only other time to do it is to break the work down into weekends and do it on weekends. Not a desirable thing, but something to be done. So that's why we don't want to wait forever to pull the string on this and make this decision. It's not just the cost, and the cost does go up every year, but it's also the way, how, when are we gonna get this done in a way that's gonna be, get the roof in before the old roof gets to the point where no return? So that's all I can tell you, but that's really what we discussed on roofing, and I think we, I think we feel pretty good about our situation with this repair, is gonna buy us some time, and then, of course, the Washington Primary roof has to be repaired as well, and that's on tonight's agenda. The roof over the library, the main roof is in great shape, the roof over the library not so much.
Jim?
I don't remember. How old is this roof?
Seventeen, eight years, I think it's in 17th year. John, is it 17? Did I lose Don?
All right, that's close enough. And then the other question is, ideally, what does the committee recommend that we do? I mean, when should we, when should we look at a referendum?
Well, the committee, well, here's what, the committee doesn't have this opinion, this is my opinion, but if you're gonna do this-
Do they all disagree with you?
No, I don't think anyone disagrees with me, but I didn't get, I didn't get a vote for the committee to represent this as their position, but from what I'm coming on this, I think it's important that there be some education done on this project, okay? Because no one is gonna want another referendum to spend another $1,400,000 or $1,400,000, whatever it ends up being by the time we're done. Because the natural inclination of voters is to say no, you wanna spend money, no. But here's the problem, if you don't spend the $1,400,000, you're committing yourself to $10 million over, you know, the next 20 years. So you're committing yourself to spend an awful lot of money, whereas you could end up spending $3 million over that same period of time. And that difference, that $7 million difference is gonna pay for a lot of the capital- pay for a lot of the capital projects on this school. And that's why it's important to do this the right way. So, you need to educate the public. And that means information should be sent out. It should be mailed out. And that means we've got to do that before we send it to referendum, because you can't spend that money after you send it to referendum. We're going to need forums in the towns. Before we even start that process, we're going to need to approach the, we've already started the process of approaching selectmen and Board of Finance people. But they need to be on board. We need to have all the stakeholders buy in. Because we don't want the referendum to fail, because that could push us to a level where we get beyond our ability to do this cheaply, and we end up committing ourselves to 10 million dollars over 20 years. So, that's really the trick. So, what the committee recommends is that we plan a period of education. If we start it in January, you're probably going to take six weeks. And then, you've got to vote to send it to referendum. So, you're looking at the soonest you could get a referendum up is April. And then, you've got the school budget in May. So, if you don't do it in early April, now you're putting it right on top of the school budget referendum. Or, you're putting it into the summer. And the later you go in the summer, the less likelihood you're going to be able to start the job before the school year starts. And this is about a month-long process of doing that work on the roof. So, the Facilities Committee recommends that we make a commitment to it as soon as possible and get it off, and get it off the dime. But that means the education phase has to be planned and executed. And to start it in January, when today is December the 19th, 18th, 17th, is kind of a tall order to do that in that period of time. But we, I do have a commitment from the guy from Garland Roofing, who will come out and will be present at those public forum, those public fora. He will meet with the stakeholders and the selectmen and the Boards of Finance, if they have questions, to understand how this process works, how our roof is constructed, and how we're going to repair it, and why this, of all the alternatives, makes the most sense. And then, I think what you present to the public is you present the information. We have three choices. We have a million four, we have four million, we have six million. And if we go with the four million, then we're going to spend six in 20 years after that. So, that's a 10 million dollar option. So, we're recommending the million five, because we think we can keep doing that for several cycles, which will keep the overall cost of keeping this building open and the roof maintained well below what anybody would have expected. We were carrying 4 million dollars or 5 million for this in our capital budget. And if we could do it for a million five and get 15 years, million four and get 15 years, boy, that'd be a real plus. So, that's what the committee's recommending.
Thank you.
Oh. Am I assuming that you think it's a bad idea to do it together with the budget referendum?
Well, I mean, you're asking them to approve a budget, and you're asking them to approve a capital expenditure. Maybe it's a good idea. I don't know. I haven't thought about it. I was just trying to figure out, how could you get it done sooner than May in order to try to get the project to start in the summer? And the sooner you do it, if you wait till May or June, you're not going to realistically start that project until the fall, and you're going to be doing it on the weekend.
Well, the advantage, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the advantage of doing it together is you could educate the public about both things and save money by doing it at the same time. And if the budget isn't going up that much, which I have no idea, but if it's not, it may make sense.
Yeah. I'm going to suggest that the Board, we picked this up and put it on a future agenda item, as an agenda item. We're now starting to have a public discussion on something we didn't notice. And I think it's not, it's beyond just an update of what's been going on. It's important. But I think, I mean, we could spend another half hour-
Yeah, we could.
-for questions on this. And I'd rather just have Don here. Yeah, exactly. But let's just think about getting it queued up for discussion. We're going to have to, the Board's going to have to talk about this at some point. So, I'd like to, well, Stephanie, I'd like to move on. So, unless it was Michael?
I just actually want to suggest something that he could bring up in his committee.
Please.
If there, it would be much better, if we're looking at the roof, there may be other things that you and the rest of the committee think would behoove us to do at the same time, rather than wait two years from now, come back to us at a considerable expense.
No, we will do that. We will do that. Because one of the things we're talking about is, the other thing, one of the other things we talked about tonight was the vehicle garage, the building for our vehicles, for all of the four snow, the four trucks we use for snow plowing, the snow blowers, the, all of the gasoline-powered equipment that by law we cannot store in this building. It must be stored in a separate building. Right now, we've got it shoved into two buildings that are dilapidated. They're not adequate to the task. And so, that's something we're going to have to come in with. And it's not going to be an inexpensive solution to the problem. But we have looked at, we are looking at, and we'll want some more input from Bob on this, as the cost of, we know what the cost of outsourcing the work is. But we want to get a handle of what the cost is in constructing the building and then buying that equipment for the next 20 years, so we see what the cost over 20 years is. We did a back-of-the-envelope calculation, think it's about a million dollars, for the program of building the building and buying and replacing trucks and all that other stuff over 20 years. The cost of snow, of letting this contract for snow removal alone, Don told me, was 3 million dollars over 20 years. So, I think it's going to end up being a fraction of the cost to build this building and continue maintaining our property ourselves in-house.
So, the other thing that I would love you to bring up in committee, other than maintenance, looking at other maintenance topics that would relate to the roof, would be facilities enhancements. I'll give you one example. It always puzzled me when I'm looking up at the ceiling in this, in this building, that it looks like there, these were designed, these wells were designed to be light wells and skylights. And at some point, it looks like somebody decided that, no, maybe that's too expensive. And now, they're just kind of ugly features of the ceiling. So, I don't, I don't know if they still are designed to be light wells and skylights, or if that was never the intention. It's just kind of a weird interior feature that we have.
They were designed to be light wells. They are skylights. They do function as skylights. If you're here in the daytime, you'll see, and it's sunny out, you'll see light coming in.
Okay.
But somewhere along the line, they decided to fill them with fluorescent lighting in order to provide more lighting in the room, because they were not providing an adequate amount of light. This is really, these are really terrible.
All right.
So, we are looking at that. We will-
Aesthetics could be something else you'll look at.
Right. Yes, we will. And the last, the last point I would make, the last thing we discussed, we started discussing the capital budget portion of the budget for next year. And there'll be more on that to come. I just wanted to let you know that we're working on it. We're studying it. And there's stuff that has to be done.
Good.
Sorry for the long report.
Well, you guys have a long list. So, don't be sorry. Stephanie, in fairness to you, did you have something you wanted to ask Greg or comment?
No, that's all right. It was continuing discussion.
Okay, the Finance Committee, go.
We haven't met since last time, so I don't have anything to report. Nothing new.
All right. All that filled up. All right, Greg, negotiations?
Nothing new to add to that. We are still in negotiations with the unions representing our administrators and representing our custodians and, I'm sorry, our paraprofessionals and clerical workers, non-cer-, you know.
And Policies, Michelle is not here tonight. So, we're going to move on to item number six on the agenda, our standing agri-science update, beginning with you, Megan. I think you have something you want to share with us?
I have two things. So, a couple of updates that we have. I did share with you right now, this is draft. I'm usually so good at that, too. Demerit for me. So, this agri-science logo is one that we have been in design and conversation with. And I wanted to make certain that, in sharing this with you, looking for feedback. At the end of the day, we will make the decision. It's going to be something that, you know, we want it to represent our school. We recognize that this is part of Chapag. So, just to kind of talk through the design, I just want to quickly put words to it. The lettering that is Chapag is the actual same lettering that is used in our Chapag logo. So, to make certain that there's an alignment between our two entities, we're all part of one another. We balance each other out. The book is supposed to be a book of knowledge. Obviously, the statement that was made was that it just invokes green, because I kept saying, well, it has to have the blue in it, like to our Chapag logo. And then, the circle is actually supposed to represent the earth. So, we have that. In my full disclosure, the part that's missing is some of that technology part, some of that, the STEM that we've talked so much about. And so, where I got reined in was, at some point, you know, that's what our program is. That's what it stands for. You don't have to overdo a logo. So, just wanted to make certain that I showcased it with everyone. I shared it. If anybody wants to share anything publicly, but you're also always welcome to send me any thoughts, any feedback that you have. But what excites me about this is we're getting closer to recognizing and achieving something that we want to put out to the public. We are proud of the fact that there's a very strong environmental feel. And I think that is important. When we're looking at our pathways, we're looking at plant science, we're looking at food, you know, we're making certain animals, there are things that are not represented in that. And at some point, are we overcrowding if we try to get them all in there? So, again, I just wanted to make certain I showed the visual representation of that. The next thing, and while Colin is setting us up, and I have to thank Anthony for this, he was helping me with a way to visually showcase the project and to make certain that we're more transparent. At some point, I feel like I talk every board meeting, and it's like a little storytelling, you know? And, oh, I presented at Newtown, or here's what Lori Travato's doing, here's what's happening, we're doing okay. But a way to visually represent it that starts to say, here's where we are today, here's how we are within the program. And so, things that we had accomplished since last time we talked, we did have the presentation to the Newtown Board of Education that actually went incredibly well. They were so positive about the program. Their only drawback was, how do we, how do we get this message out to more people? And they were very, very excited. We have Montessori and Ramsay Hall presentations to parents. The Washington Montessori is coming up on Thursday. And additionally, we had originally had the idea that we would have their eighth graders come and shadow and have an agri-science lesson with our students. It's too late. You know, it's late in the game and decisions are being made. So, what Lori Travato has done is actually talk, instead of looking at eighth graders, start talking about our seventh graders. You know, we really, knowing that we're marketing already late in the game, whereas now we get to start to prepare and do things in a forward-thinking way. So, that has been a change since last we talked. And the first advisory board meeting was held. And we had a strong representation from our local farmers in various towns. So, quite proud of that. So, things that we have that are going on, Kim is working with Teresa, Lori Travato, they're working with art teachers and Colin in order to get the brochure ready and make certain that it is visually representing and getting the information. And actually, Teresa found a wonderful graphic for our website. We recognize it's not brochure-ready, because if you copy it, it gets blurred by some of the images. However, the images are so powerful, it's a fantastic way to encapsulate what are the pathways and where are they going. We are now, the other sending schools are willing to have a link to our page. So, that way, there's the strong feeder connection that we want to have as little clicks as possible to get to the people who want to be to Chapag at Chapag. So, we are working very closely with our six sending towns. Additionally, Kim and Lori Ferrera are working on our scheduling, making certain that we have the opportunities, that we've mapped things out. We're ready for our new students. And so, as we're already setting up the structure and presentation, we know how they're going to integrate into our school as agri-science students. And we are working with the union. There are considerations. Part of the agri-science program is they are year-round teachers. And so, we have to certainly look at that, because the contract language is for a general education teacher. So, the union has already been on board with that, is talking to us. So, please know we are working through some of those considerations. And by next time we talk, we will have our budget that will be complete and drafted. And we may give you a preview of coming attractions with the budget in advance with agri-science, because I think it's that important. And we are teasing it out from the other budget, because it does have revenue in it. And so, to recognize, we want to make certain we're watching how it's being spent against.
You can't read the top box. Can you walk us through it?
Sure. So, the top box, and that's just the overall visual, how we're doing. So, green, things are good. Yellow, we have some cautionary tales. Red, I'll hang my head a little bit lower. But right now, the overall project is in the green. Our timelines that we have set out are right now being met. The way that things are let out, we are on task to deliver. So, overall is green. Okay. So, the first one is, so the first one is recruiting. So, our recruiting efforts, right now, we've gone to all the schools. Lori Travato has worked with the parents. We have our applications out. We are on track. January 4th is our date. That is our next date we're waiting for. But right now, we have, we are in alignment with our plan. The next one is, go ahead, please.
Just, do we have any applications yet?
We do.
We have about 20.
20? Okay.
And they're coming in well ahead of the deadline.
The counselors also, they're going into classrooms in our, with our home graders, to make sure that they understand what the application process is like. We had an advisory, but sometimes when it's close to home, you have to kind of hit them over the head a little bit and make sure they understand. Because it's a big, the application is a big process.
No, excellent. So, the next column is the program, and that's our program design. That has to do with our curriculum, how we're mapping things out for each one of our pathways. We've always talked about, we knew we were going to do the ninth grade pathway, and we would do plant science, nine through 12. We are in alignment with that. Also, connecting with our sending schools, recognizing staffing that's going to be necessary. We know that next year, we'll be seeking to hire two agri-science teachers and wait till the following year for the third hire. So, right now, on track, Kim and I have talked today, knowing that we're going to put a posting out pending the budget, but we want to already start looking for some of those agri-science teachers. So, we don't want to be behind the ball when, at this point, if we're looking for cutting-edge program, we want to have the right people delivering that. So, that's incredibly important to us. And again, program also has to do with our contract reviews and making certain, we're also exploring, what are our ways to expand? If we have other opportunities with other pathways, how does that happen? How are those conversations going? So, the next column, and this is our yellow, is the marketing. And really, it comes down to making certain that our mission and vision are clear across and shared with everybody. I think we still hear some of those reverting back to VoAg statements. And that starts to say, okay, we're not getting our message delivered as clearly. We need to make certain, even internally, I hear people still say AgSTEM. I still hear people say VoAg. And so, to make certain that language is consistent, that people know what we're trying to do, both internally and externally. Our branding and logo, again, as I showed you, we're just talking about some of those things, looking to finalize that. That's behind schedule. I was hoping to have that done in October. Those are things in which I recognize, I've lost ground on things that I needed for our eighth graders coming in. To here, we have 20. Fantastic. But it's also one in which we want to make certain we're sharing the message to getting that to all people who potentially had wanted to be there. The next category you can't see is finance, and Bob keeps that in the green right now. We are under budget. We recognize, and Greg will certainly talk about, as we watch the contingency, you know, making certain that we stay within our means. Jen?
We're getting applications in, January 4th. 4th. Oh, sorry. No. January 4th. If I can say it one more time, January 4th. Keep saying it.
And Megan, is that, is that a standard deadline around the state?
Correct. Yeah.
So, we have no flexibility with that? If we wanted to extend that deadline, for example, if we didn't reach our target numbers in terms of what you were hoping for, is there a possibility of saying, we can extend that a week, for example?
The state sets our deadlines. Part of it is also because your sending towns have to incorporate in their budget some of the costs. So, the more that you chase your own deadlines, it does put other districts in a bind. So, that is the state-set deadline, and that's been our ticking clock.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, only because, as we both know, students are away for winter break right before the deadline. So, it's not like they'd have an opportunity to have a counselor remind them or anything like that.
No. As long as everything is postmarked by the 4th, we can take. But it is one in which, right now, Lori Travato's been working with the guidance counselors of the sending schools, asking them to even send us, how many applications are they sending to us? So, we'd at least have some preliminary numbers going into Christmas, because I'd like to enjoy the holidays myself. So. So, those are some of our considerations right now. So, going back to finance, right now, you know, our big ones, we secured the band. Execution on the bond is in April 2019. So, everything is tracking to expectations. We're watching all of our spendings, and Bob's been right on top of that. And Greg, working with the building committee, can share also some of those decisions and conversations. And the last category, which I will fix this slide for the future so that way it is nice and bright and crisp. Okay. It's Google. We blame. Is the building itself. And right now, currently, we are in green. We haven't hit any big changes that, right now, no, we're not cutting a ribbon when students, you know, before students walk into school. It is after the fact. But right now, all the timelines that have been set by ONG, we have not had setbacks since the groundbreaking. So, at this point, I'm keeping that in the green as we're tracking and watching. There are some issues that we know we're watching. Parking constraints. I think if you went to our Holiday Bazaar, if you were there the night of our drama production that also had three sporting events, parking was difficult would be an understatement. So, we recognize that. We're working with ONG in order to find out what are some of those parking options that we have. But that, right now, is our status and update. And as you can see with the timeline, it kind of gives you some of those big projects and where we are within those big projects.
Just a question on the timeline again. So, January 4th is the deadline for the students to get their applications in. And then, obviously, we have to make offers, and then the students have to accept the offers. What, when about does that happen?
We're looking to meet on going over the applications the week after. So, giving time for anything that may be postmarked. So, our committee is getting together in order to review the applications. We'd like to get those acceptance letters out as soon as possible. So, we're probably looking, probably, I want to say mid to end of January. And then, as far as our deadline for them to get it back, we're looking at early March for those decisions.
One question. I know you've done a lot of marketing so far, and you've pretty much, you know, you've been working that. I just wonder if there's like one final push of something we can do, whether it's on our website, only because I've talked to a couple of parents who actually attended the information meeting, and they're still confused. And these are parents that are here at Chapag. And I'm just wondering, if they're confused, how many other people are confused? And our website's a little bit spotty on that because I've gone to our website and it's just, you're not finding a lot of information. And they're worried about the curriculum. And I didn't really have an answer for them because we don't really have a curriculum yet, as far as what kind of, which classes specifically. But my other thing is, they were still under the impression that the school is not going to be ready, or that part of the program isn't going to be ready for the opening of fall, that it was going to still take another year. So, I know these, it might just be a few people, but if they're confused, I just think there should be like a final push of some sort, an article in the newspaper, any, anything that we can do just before, you know, January 4th.
No, I appreciate the feedback. And I think, yes, the yellow is one in which it is recognized. But to say that those final pushes, yeah, it's the full press. And it's to say to you, "You're right, and hearing that feedback is important." Because we are in that final moment and...
I know. I know. And that's what makes me nervous.
I don't want any mistakes to stop somebody from having an opportunity.
Exactly.
So, we will make certain that we're looking at that.
Okay. Thanks.
No, thank you.
Are we allowed to know what the selection process is like? Are there, I mean, who's on the committee and what your kind of timeline and what that looks like once everything comes in?
Sure. As far as the committee, yeah.
I know.
Double secret. No, you know, Kim, Lori Ferreira, Teresa will be part of it, Lori Travato, I will be part of it as well. And also, looking at possibly having some teachers join us. And really, what we're looking at is, it is the criteria, it's their letters of recommendation. It is looking at their transcripts up until, you know, eighth grade. How are they doing? We do have access to any information regarding their essays that they write for us. They have to have a proven interest in agri-science. So, for us, it's making certain that, as we're looking through, it's not just the GPA. We don't want a student to start our program who has a little bit of an interest in agri-science and then decide after a year, they want to go back to the home school. You know, for us, making certain we have a continuous education is incredibly important. So, that's part of what we look at for the screeners. Yes. We, looking at their achievement rates, that's important to us. We do want students, we know that we're taking a program and it's not the traditional agri-science program. It is putting in that element of STEM and making certain that we're looking at every opportunity as a, it's not just about the farming, it's about how are they collecting data? Or how are they, what is the business-mindedness of the project? Are the students able to stretch themselves to say, you know, "I have an interest in technology because I recognize that technology has an integration with how farming techniques happened for the 21st century." Additionally, you know, we're also looking at things like what plant science is in terms of, there's medicinal purposes, there's nutritional purposes. Are we getting students who are interested not just in, you know, floral arrangements? Yes, that's part of it. But there's so much more to plants and how they're being utilized in our society. So, we want to take students who have that vision with us in our creation of our program to say that, right now, we have the ninth grade, we have the ninth grade experience mapped out. We have the 12th for plant science. We still have three other pathways to develop all the way through. For our applicants and looking at it, we're looking at those who have a demonstrated interest in our vision.
And there's no pre-selection or pre-qualification done by the state? I mean, would they look at at least like an incomplete application or something? They wouldn't kick that back to us? Or does everything that gets sent into the state gets like pushed right back to us?
We get it. It is sent to us. So, we do get all of the applications.
Oh, so it doesn't go to the state first?
No, they have to go to the state website. We've created the link onto it. It is a common application, but it has our address that they send it directly to. Okay.
Greg, would, any comments regarding the building?
Sure. I'm going to keep this brief since I went way over my time on facilities. You have just had distributed to you today the first, or the second monthly progress report. These will now be coming in every month. It looks, the cover looks like this. And this is a, an explication of what's going on with the project and where we are dollar-wise and everything else. I just want to point out to you that on page two of this report, what you will see is what the original, or the last report said and what this report says in terms of things like the GMP, the allowances, the estimated changes, that kind of thing. And it gives you sort of a quick summary of where we stand and where we expect to be on this and what we've done on approved changes and where the construction costs are. You then get the details of every category throughout the report. And then, it comes down, and eventually, right around page 20, you get a report on the change orders and things that we've done. And right now, I'm going to just give you a brief rundown of the change orders we've approved. We have approved the first change order to make some fan revisions. That was $3,987 to the bad side, you know, a cost to us. We had some changes done to one of the HVAC control wiring repairs that actually netted us a savings of $1,629. We were able to get a Level 2 generator enclosure that netted us a savings of $60,425. And that's where we are today, well, until today, that's where we were. We were about $59,000 under where we thought we would be. Now, we've spent some money tonight. The first thing we did is we approved a, an acceptance of the alternate to put in the outdoor riding ring. That's $280,000. You authorized us to spend an additional $280,000 at the last meeting, and we have selected that alternate. That will be contracted out. The other item that came up was the HVAC for the robotics and that whole backend, the robotics and the graphics area, and there's a darkroom in there and whatnot. That was originally estimated by the bidding process, or should say that was bid at a contract where the number ended up being like $40,000. Turns out, that number was wrong. The contractor somehow mixed up two lines and submitted it on the wrong line. And the net effect is, if he were forced to provide this at the real cost, he would not be able to do the bid, would have to walk away, and then we'd be, we'd end up with the next highest bidder. This number is not 40. It's ballooned all the way up to 117,409. And that's the number we're going to have to go with to air-condition that space. And if we had allowed him to walk and taken the next lowest bidder, it would have cost us somewhere between $165,000 and $200,000 to the bad side. So, it made sense to try to keep this in. Why did this happen? Why were the numbers off? Well, it had to do with the, it has to do with a lot of things, but apparently, there was a mistake made in the preparation of that bid. And so, rather than allow that to cause us to spend even more money, and this is something that the superintendent makes a very good point for, the reason you need to have HVAC and air conditioning for those areas and not just air, outside air being conditioned and circulated by the interior of the building. The reason you want that is you've got electronic equipment. There's a bunch of Mac computers, and there's robots and robotic things going on. And you really don't want that to get hot. I mean, it produces enough heat on its own that you really want to keep that area conditioned. So, this is just the nature of the beast. We're going to have to spend this money. And so, we approved that tonight, that alt, tonight, because if we had until January 8th to, if we didn't select it by January 8th, we were going to lose the actual real bid price on that job. So, we were going to lose the price, and therefore, we decided to accept it now. And that's sort of, that's sort of where we are on dollars. Because we had saved 60 and we spent 117, between those two items, we're up the net of the difference, which is what, $57,000? And then, of course, the 280 for the outdoor riding ring is a separate, kind of a separate consideration. But that's more or less where we are. We're on track. We're still expecting delivery when we expect it, which is that most of the, a good bit of the building, most of it is going to be finished in time for school to start. There'll be some work that causes us to wait for formal delivery for a little bit beyond that. But we're hoping to pick up some of that extra time. We've picked up some of it. We're hoping to get some of it back. ONG has created a really good system. It's kind of state-of-the-art system where they are getting contractors to indicate when they will have certain pieces of certain parts of their job completed and when they can get it completed early because that allows us to say, "Okay, here we've got the guy doing the, I don't know, doing the installation of drywall. And we know that in rooms 2, 3, and 4, the drywall's going to be done on October 15th." Normally, the painter wouldn't be coming in until December 15th, but now we know we got three rooms on October 15th. And so, the painter comes in and does those. So, we advance work, and this allows us to get things done faster and more complete. Very few firms are doing this kind of micro-targeting of their work, but ONG is taking us on to the cutting edge because they recognize, "We want the school building delivered on time." And if we can get it earlier than we expect, that's what we want to do. So, those are the kind of things that ONG is doing, that your building committee is doing to try to advance the dates for delivery.
Greg, you said we had that package?
You should have had this package about an hour ago. So, it's very recent.
The board package or separately? The one from you. Okay.
So, when you look through this, I'm sure you'll have questions. I wish I could have gotten this a week ago, but unfortunately, we just got it. And you can, we can discuss it at the next meeting if you have any questions about this. The whole schedule is in there. It's a very much more detailed schedule. You will need to review it on a large computer screen. This, an eight-and-a-half by 11, it's impossible to read. And then, there's reports about everything, including changes to scope and the other things. There are pictures of things that are going on in the process, and that's where we are. There's, an issue had come up, an issue's come up where we actually have another, what's going to end up being another change order. We ended up, and this is coming up to the next meeting, I'll just give you the brief, the brief version of it. This has to do with, a lot of people are saying, "What are you doing? It looks like you're just moving dirt around the site." Well, there's a lot of ongoing work inside the building, and they're demolishing the slabs in order to bring the plumbers in, hopefully next week, to start laying the waste pipes for the new plumbing, for the science labs and also for the north addition and what's going, the north interior work, what's going on up there. Apparently, there was a, because we were pushing the plans out and bidding out Phase 1, which was the demolition, faster than the plans were being finished, there are a couple of things that didn't get on the plans properly. And as a result, we're going to end up spending a little bit of extra money to demolish more slab than we thought. And the same thing over here. But over here, we're getting a credit on the south end, and that's going to partially offset the costs on the north end. And the net effect of it is, we think it's going to end up costing us about $5,000 extra. But this is the way, I just wanted to give you an illustration of how these things come up. When I told you originally that we would have a better idea of whether we would be able to save most of our contingency, it was when we got out of the ground, when we finished digging in the ground. And this was one of those things that they found in the ground. They found pipes that had to be accommodated, therefore required more slab exclamation in order to accommodate those. And this is the kind of thing you find when you're in the ground because there are little things that just aren't there, and you don't always have the information. I hope we're going to be out of that realm soon, but we're still in it for the next couple of months. So, that's where we are. But we're doing very well, and we're in very good shape in terms of the way this is proceeding.
Thank you, Greg.
A propos of our conversation at the last meeting and Greg's report tonight about the riding ring, I'm sure most of us read in the voices about, although we're not necessarily in competition, that Nonolog is building a new riding ring and spending a lot of money on their program, so.
Yeah. They are.
And I, yeah, I think we do want to be on top of that. Oh, the other thing I wanted...
Just to, well, we had it first. No, we did.
I understand.
Reason 12 was, that was on our agenda, and Nonolog took note, but for the delay from the state. You know, we would have literally been first, but, but point taken. It's, it is a form of competition, and those sending districts that are looking at, you know, we've asked to move away from Nonolog to come to us, there will be a period where there'll be some comparison. And that was part of my calculus in thinking why it's so important for us, because you don't want somebody to look at it and say, "You've taken something away from me," or "an opportunity." That's not a good way to start. So, thanks for pointing that out, Jim.
All right. And the one final thing in my report, so I can end it on this note, is I would like to really, I'd really like to recognize the outstanding and relentless work of Sue Haverly in organizing this thing. It would not be functioning without Sue. Thank you, Sue. You have no idea, not only does she have to do all the work of keeping us straight, of arranging minutes, of getting out materials, of constantly dealing with things that come up, but she's got to deal with me, too. And that alone is worth the price of admission. She has done a tremendous job.
Yeah. Let's give her a round on that note. All right. Item, thank you, Megan. Item number seven, new topics, actually, the board meeting calendar, so it's back with you, Megan.
I just, I wanted to bring up for conversation and just looking into next year, there are two calendars that are proposed for board meetings. One has it on a Monday, and one has it on a Thursday. It was not looking to do anything other than kind of put it out there, review it, look at it, and then bring it back up for conversation. As the next board meeting, we will be looking to approve our meeting dates.
Why did you put it out there?
Because I want to make certain that it's something that you all consider rather than just put upon to have...
You mean, the possibility of Thursday meetings as opposed to Monday meetings?
Correct. Yes.
Why, not that I'm opposed to it at all. What is...
Why create a change or suggestion?
What is your incentive?
I think that a lot of times, one posting, sometimes in getting the agenda together, can be an issue when the weekend happens. I think there's a lot of things that happen as the week catches its momentum. I feel a lot of times that I'm doing things in the rearview mirror versus something that feels like it's happening in the moment. So, that was the rationale. But again, this is one in which the suggestion, wanting to have an opinion, but wanting to do this with eyes wide open, so putting it out this time in order to then do a vote on it next time.
Are there any, are any comments about a Thursday meeting?
Um, not a Thursday, but-
Okay, can, any, just kind of up, down?
I work two Thursday evenings of the month, so that would mean bad for me.
That's just one person, but-
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Greg?
It would be, it would be a deal breaker for me. I could not do Thursday meetings. So one of the problems is, is that many, many land use commissions meet on Thursday. There are a lot of meetings in the state that occur on Thursday for bar associations and other things that, that affect me. And I would find, Monday is bad enough, Thursday would be impossible.
Okay, that's why I'm, I'm just kind of going around the table, Alan?
Yeah, my, my weekend starts Thursday night, so.
That's a different problem.
Leave it to our voice of reason.
That's a different problem. Jen?
Well, we could always start after the meeting for your weekend on Thursdays, right? Um, to, just because I'm thinking about this now, being a Monday before Christmas, and I haven't looked at the calendar, but I, I was just wondering, because I know we meet every other week, but I would certainly love to meet two weeks, two Mondays in a row versus having to meet the week before Christmas. I'm just, because I'm in the thick of it, it was sort of a struggle, and I just wonder, that's just two cents about that?
Yep.
Well, I just think, because I'm here in this moment and being pulled, I would, I'd much prefer it be two Mondays in the beginning of the month, and then skip this Monday or Thursday. And then the other question that I have that I just have been noticing, and I, and I maybe missed this, but we have an educational meeting and a business meeting once every week, right? Every other week? Or do we still have that? Is that, because I don't notice it on the agenda.
We've, we've, we've been going in and out of agenda items as they come up.
Mm-hmm. So are we still having an education meeting and a business meeting? And do we just, I, did I miss the discussion on that?
Because every time we put together an agenda, there's always a blend of it, so it became a moot point to put something at the top of the agenda when we had a mix of educational topics, and as well as business topics.
So, because that, again, I'm just asking, so what are the, how many, since we've been doing this, we do an education meeting and then a business meeting, so what were the benefits for that? And I don't know if that's something Megan can ask, answer from me, in terms of us having an education meeting, and then, yeah.
Historically?
Yeah.
I mean, from what, what I was told, was, there was a point in the board's history, I guess, where there was, business was always trumping education topics. And so to force education to come to the surface, then they said, well, let's dedicate a meeting just for education. And that's how it came to be. Which, and those, I see some heads nodding, so those whom have been here can validate that, but that's what I was told.
Because I guess for me, what I've always, when I see there's a business meeting, and then I see an education meeting, I kind of go in knowing what I'm expecting. And I really enjoy, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I enjoy the education meetings more than I do the business meetings. And so I really like having an education meeting focused on that, and I get that there can be a blend, but I like being able to designate an education meeting, so we can have departments come in and present, like I think I once had recommended, I'd love to see Donna come in and talk about the art department, and so I just didn't know if that was a discussion that we collectively have as a board to make that decision, or if it was just a decision that was made.
It was, again, not, it was one of efficiency. We, we have two week, two meetings every other week, and we could wait a month cycle to get to something business-oriented that we needed to do. So we started saying, we have some education thing, and I, and that's when I asked, why are we doing this, and what are the, what do other districts do? Other districts don't have the distinction. Other districts have the discipline in building an agenda that makes time for everything that needs to happen.
I guess-
And so, so it wasn't, it wasn't grounded in, well, this is how, you know, every district does it, it's the law, it's just how we just came to be. So I was just following, putting together an agenda to take advantage of the time when we do meet, and everything that was topical, and nothing so far has not been had.
So again, I, I hear-
I hear what you're saying.
But I just think as a board, collectively, that would be a discussion that I would have liked to have had, because I personally like having an education meeting, and I like having a business meeting. And so moving forward, that wasn't clear to me, so when the agendas are coming out now, I'm kind of not really clear on that. So I would have appreciated being, if there was a discussion had, because I like the way it used to run.
Good.
As far as, there, there is, as you know, an education committee, subcommittee-
Right.
-of the board. You know, I, I do meet on a, you know, monthly basis with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, to talk about what those topics are. And so you can expect that on those dates, even though maybe they are no longer exclusively education, that there might be some business creep into the meeting agenda, that the superintendent recognizes, and I recognize, that there's a significant chunk of that meeting going to be dedicated to educational topics.
I appreciate that, and I'm well aware, I'm not saying that we're not going to not focus on education, clearly. I just think that, I didn't know that that was something we weren't doing anymore, and I would have liked to have had that conversation. And I like the way it was originally structured, and just being able to have the conversation one way or the other would have been helpful.
Well, the board has an opportunity to, to send the chair comments and questions about the agenda, what they want to put on the agenda, and that's, that still remains our policy. So anyone who wants to, has an idea for an upcoming agenda item, I'm just trying to put together agendas that keep the business moving, respect our time, that we're not here for four hours, and just, other than that, we, we have these times, we can cover everything and anything if we've got enough time, and we can move through things efficiently. So, but I hear what you're saying, and we could, we could take a look at that.
Great.
Alan?
There was talk, maybe it was last year, about less meetings? You want to go on a greater weekly cycle, like six-week cycle or something like that? Does that just become impossible, because we, as it turns out, there were more things-
Well, at one point, we were talking about maybe just going back to once a month.
Right.
You know, not even six, but just once a month. And it just seemed like we, we just, as much as I kind of like to do once a month, I, I just think we'd have killer board meetings if we wait once a month.
The agendas are getting a little heavy again.
It seems like we have too much to plow through.
That's what I thought. That was at a time when we, for some reason, had for a little while, very short meetings, but now we're getting back to normal. Okay.
Well, you know, keep in mind, we have an obligation to, to send our schedule for the upcoming year to the state.
Right.
It's a compliance issue. Once we do that, we're not compelled to keep that schedule.
Oh, right.
Right? We could change board meetings around if we get, if we start to find out we're getting bumped or tight because of a holiday. We could, we could decide as a board that we don't need this meeting, or we want to move to a, you know, or cancel a meeting. So we're not beholding to that, we just have an obligation to at least make the first declaration. So, so we, we could look at that. Is that going to once a month is something we could look at, but if we schedule every two weeks, then we're safe, just in case we, otherwise, then it's a special meeting.
I just figured, we talked about, I just figured that-
Yeah.
Should probably be out of the picture, just because we're, we are getting busy.
Yeah.
I just would like to note that I like consistency. I mean, obviously, as I throw out, I'd like to have the first two meetings of the month, December, in the first two weeks, because I don't want to be here for Christmas week. But I just like consistency. I like knowing that when I'm coming into a meeting, I'm flexible enough to know that within a business meeting, we can have education or vice versa. I just like it to be a discussion among all of us, moving forward what we would like, and be able to all be on the same page about it, so.
Yeah. Anything else? No? Okay. All right. Colin, you have a slideshow for us. Jim? Jim? Do you want to introduce this, or what is this?
This is a year in review, oh. This is a year in review slideshow of everything from September up until this point.[1160.83]
Colin, will that be on the website?
I was waiting to talk publicly until we showed it here first, but it's been.
Super. Great. Yeah, we're getting better at this. Graduation requirements, Teresa, I believe you will talk with us.
It will be in one second.
I think it's behind you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to continue with tonight's theme by bringing more music to your ears. Did I catch your attention? So this evening, I'm here to talk about the state legislation that has officially changed graduation requirements for the class of 2023 and beyond. And that is next year's freshmen. So we're starting to plan ahead because we recognize that those students need to make sure that they get all of their particular credits. And this really is a preview of more information to come because we do have a policy that speaks to our graduation requirements. And so the policy committee has that policy on their agenda, and it's going to come in your direction with more specificity. But I wanted to just give you an overview and just answer any particular questions that you might have. Okay, so I reference here the actual state law that speaks to the revisions to the high school graduation requirements. And they have been in existence for decades, and there are changes that occurred every summer. And they would put them off and put them off and put them off each year. But finally, this past year, they did indicate that these will stand, that we don't expect to change this, excuse me, this coming summer. And so that's why I felt comfortable coming to you to give you this actual preview. So speaking of graduation, the state currently requires 20 credits. Here at Chapag, we have required 25 credits for years. So they are increasing that to 25, but we already currently meet that expectation. Some additional specifics, the state is requiring nine credits in humanities, including the arts. So at Chapag, students will take four years of English, three years of social studies, and then they have flexibility to select two electives that will meet the nine-credit requirement. The state also requires nine credits in science, technology, engineering, and math. We will have four years of math, three years of science, and again, two options for electives for students to meet that requirement of nine credits as a minimum. The state is requiring one world language credit. Let me speak to this for a moment. That was never a state requirement before. So if students did not take a world language, they could still graduate. I have to tell you, most of our students were taking world language, not just one year, but many years. However, now it is going to be a requirement that all students take a world language at least one year. In addition, a full credit in health and a credit in PE. We already have the full credit in PE. The increase is in health. We currently were only required to have students take half a year, 0.5 of a credit in health. So we now have to increase that, and I'm going to speak in more detail about that particular requirement. In addition, the state is requiring what they refer to mastery-based assessment credit. That aligns nicely with our senior project. So we are going to use senior project in place of that actual credit. There was no requirement for a senior project from the state, but Chapag has had that tradition, and it's well, well-respected what the students do in senior year. So we're going to continue that. So to consolidate a bit, the actual changes to incoming students will include the requirement of a world language credit, will include a full credit of health, which we will be adding a semester course freshman year, and the mastery-based assessment credit, which will be our senior project. So the world language, there's no impact as far as additional work that we have to do because the courses already exist. We already have world language, Spanish and French, and students can choose. So we don't need to do any major work there. The mastery-based assessment, like I said, we already have that opportunity for students, and they will all complete that senior year. But the health requirement does require us to spend time preparing. And Jason Conway, who sends his regrets, he could not be here this evening, although he definitely wanted to be here to talk to you further. He and the teachers have been working, and he and I have been meeting to put this course together. And so I just want to give you some highlights regarding the ninth-grade self-management class. There are four main goals, and the focus is on health and overall well-being. So the students will learn about signs of stress and anxiety and how to recognize those signs. They're also going to be learning about coping with stress and anxiety, and also how to manage time effectively. There is a lot that they have to balance. Granted, here, you know, we're a very, very supporting environment, but these are attributes that we want them to be able to take beyond high school and with the transition to high school, more responsibility. They're growing, they're getting older. We want them to be able to handle the academic as well as their own personal well-being. To go into more detail, the proposed ninth-grade half-credit will focus on self-management, as I indicated, time-management skills, the recognition and management of stress, coping, and conflict resolution. Because when they start to develop, the relationships change. And so students need to know, how do I communicate with others when I'm not comfortable? How do I communicate when they're not making me comfortable? How do I communicate when someone is perhaps trying to present a situation that I really don't understand, and I'd like to get more information, or I'd like to step back? How do I handle that discomfort? So that aspect will be new for the ninth graders, but it will lead nicely to the current 10th-grade course, which also focuses on holistic health, but it also includes nutrition, emergency first aid, current health trends and issues. I'd like to focus here on the preventive care in understanding that students can do self-examinations. It's important for students to understand the cancers that are out there. This is going beyond the traditional health class. It's really looking at medicine that currently exists in society, and what are those health concerns? And so making students aware of that will be important. And so we're taking it to another level as far as health is concerned. We'll continue the substance abuse and tobacco-required curriculum and overall health assessment. So in a nutshell, it's really about helping kids to be aware that it's hard to make decisions. Life is hard, and sometimes, you know, curves are thrown at us, and how do we present ourselves? Do we always present our best? And so if students are able to reflect and to really look at how they feel as an individual, and whether they're on a breaking point, how do they handle that if they're in a breaking point? In addition, how do they present themselves in class? How do they present themselves at home? Does their best individual show up? You know, when mom or dad show up at home, they've been out working a long day. Does that child's best show up when those parents are there? Just being very reflective of how we present ourselves and how we handle some disappointments in life and how we treat others. So students will be engaging in role-playing, scenario evaluation, article reviews, different dynamic exercises to help them to become empathetic and also reflective as they grow up and hopefully are able to sustain a healthy life themselves. So I just wanted to give you that overview and let you know that there is no fiscal impact. We are able to absorb this with the current staffing that we have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm assuming they'll be taught in the first semester of each respective year?
Well, we won't be able to offer it to all the freshmen first semester. So some will take it first semester, others will take it second semester. We would need to have more staffing if we were going to do that.
Okay.
We do have, you know, seven periods in a day, so under our current schedule, students will have to work it within those seven periods, yeah.
So the implication clearly is the amount of open electives they could take over the course of their high school career is going to be limited by.
Well, this will be an additional requirement.
Right.
We do think it's an important course based on the health, mental health of our society that we do believe that the state was trying to behave in a responsible manner by asking school districts to take on an additional half-credit. So we're trying to also promote a preventive proactive lifestyle of care and well-being.
Colin?
One of my questions was very similar. I was actually hoping that it would be in the fall semester. Maybe we can look at that in terms of fiscal issues. I know we're, you know, we're a small school, and that can be tricky as far as scheduling. But then again, it also might work in terms of being to get a small ninth grade to be able to have it. Because it just seems to me that it's really crucial, and it would be a shame for half the kids to be able to start their high school career with that right out of the box, and the other have to wait and fend for themselves the first semester. So just if we can keep that, I know there's budgetary constraints, but it might be good to keep trying as opposed to just giving up for lost.
Those are, those are our challenges.
Yeah. My other question is, from the state that you showed, it only added up to 22. What are the other three credits?
Electives.
Oh, they are electives?
Yes.
So they meant, so in other words, when the state says.
There are these categories that are mandatory, and then you want to take more arts and humanities? By all means, you can take more in that particular.
So there were some, there were some specific electives allotted in the 19, in the 18, but then there are some even unallocated electives on top of that that they're stipulating.
Right. I just wanted you to see what the actual requirements are. And then there is personalization and choice for students.
I see. So in other words, that means they wanted elective here, elective here, and then the rest can be either more there or elsewhere.
Exactly, exactly.
Lisa?
So I understand that that half-credit is mandated by the state. Is the program that you put together, was that, did that come from the state, or did you all put that together?
We put it together.
Because I really liked the topics of the mental health and the stress, so I think that was really good. So they just said, you just have to add another half-credit. All right, well, good. I really like that.
And I should add that we did survey eighth-grade students for input because those students are going to be taking this course.
Right.
And we want to make sure we match what we were thinking of to, you know, are there any other things that are in kids' minds? And so we are seeing a definite overlap.
No, I think that's.
It's affirming.
That's really important. I think you guys did a great job with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I don't know if you can go back to the slide that you were showing us the humanities and STEM elective changes there.
There it is.
So it seems to me that, from what I know from my own daughters, for the humanities and arts, that the number of electives that they could choose from, those two electives, additional electives they would be required to take, that there's a, there's a huge number of possible options. Could you walk me through for STEM what the options would be for students to pick up those two electives that they would need?
Sure. So you're talking about more math, if they wanted to take more math options, computer science, certainly robotics, wearable technologies. So there are possibilities within that scope. Or if a student is really enjoying science, they can have more science than what is the minimum requirement and have those credits count.
And is there a healthy mix of both full-year and half-year course options there?
For the technology, there is, because robotics would be typically a half-year. And then you also have the computer science, and we also have then wearable technologies and any additional new courses that we might be looking at implementing.
And would business, the business department, would that be towards STEM?
Depends on the actual course. So it would have to be how, how the course is presented would have to meet the code requirements for courses that the state is providing us so that it would fall under this.
So they have very specific guidelines in terms of.
There's coding specifications so that when they get the TCS report, the teacher-course-student alignment, that it falls under certain categories, so we have to code them appropriately.
Okay. So in other words, like a class that we offer, like investing, maybe, maybe not, depending on the curriculum?
Correct, correct.
Are the agri-science students required to meet these credits as well?
Yes, yes.
So they'll be taking world language?
Yes, and they're mixed in with the other students for the majority of their courses. I want to go back to your question, Mike, just for a second, to say that we can't give a credit in a particular area if that teacher doesn't have a certification for that area. So you might think, you know, in investing math, luckily, we have a teacher who is certified in math. We wouldn't be able to give a credit, even though it could be heavy in math, if that actual teacher doesn't have that certification.
Just to clarify, so the stress and anxiety topic, is that mandated by the state?
No.
No, it isn't. So that topic is.
Half-credit in health, right. We were looking societally, what do we see in society as a need? What do we see, you know, even amongst our own community? And, you know, mental health, well-being does raise the concern, and so we felt that it could be a benefit to our kids.
Definitely. I mean, when you think about it, the transition from middle school to high school and that. And so are problems manifesting themselves, behavioral problems, et cetera?
I wouldn't say.
Due to this stress and anxiety?
I wouldn't say that we have, if you're looking for like a specific number, that, I didn't even go there. It really is about the challenges of being a youth in 2018. You know, there are positive things technology brings, but there has been a lot that technology has brought that has created a lot of stressors for kids in fitting in and everybody knowing your whole life in like a matter of half a second.
It's very thoughtful because it could stave off some real problems.
We're trying to be very proactive.
And I was just gonna echo, I think, one of the things in talking to Ally and noticing some anxiety that happens for our students is the internalization that's happening more and more, you know, versus being able and how to communicate and how to relate to other people. So providing that early on, I think, kudos.
Thank you. Well, you know, if you've had teenagers, they go through a strange phase. And, you know, I have my own teenagers, but, you know, my son, who's a senior, when he starts getting an attitude, I'll just say, you know, I understand you're a teenager. It's okay to still like me. I know you're having some strange feelings right now, and I'm just patient through it because you have to have some level of my understanding. But they don't necessarily open up, and that is pretty scary because they start to demonstrate their stress in other ways that are not healthy. So communication is tremendous.
Teresa, on the two electives in STEM,
Yes.
just for, just to make sure we're all on the same page, can non-agri-science students satisfy any of the two electives in agri-science classes?
Well, that's an interesting question because agri-science is mostly for the agri-science students, but.
Well, it's on the assumption that there's capacity in a class.
Correct.
We'd never bump, obviously, an ag student. So on the assumption, we have capacity.
But we are also looking to offer electives in addition to just the core courses for kids that are in agri-science that will offer those kinds of opportunities for non-agri-science students. So we are also looking at that.
So let me just make sure, so there'll be electives in? So some of the curriculum in agri-science will be considered electives with respect to that program?
I'm sorry?
Agri-science curriculum.
Yes.
Will have required classes.
Correct.
Right?
And those teachers have a very specific certification.
And they'll have electives that they could take as well?
Correct, correct.
And the intersection between the two high school students is their electives and these electives?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Got it.
Yep. And this is just a minimum. Like I said, it's two electives within that category to meet the minimum nine credits. But we haven't gotten to the 25, as was brought up before. So if a student really is math and science-heavy, they can certainly take five electives in that particular category.
At what point does the board need to approve this?
Yes, yes.
And at what point?
A policy will be from the policy committee.
From the policy committee?
With the actual specifics.
At what point do you think that might happen?
Within a month because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on the agenda coming up. So you'll, I just wanted to preview it so that when you see it, it'll just make more sense.
Any other questions?
I just, I.
Good.
So about the health requirement, I too agree that I think it's really important to address a lot of these issues. I think that, you know, when John was saying behavioral, for me, I just, I was just watching a documentary that recently students, that, and I hate sounding so morbid, but that suicide rates have gone up significantly because of anxiety and stress. And so I just think that it's really important that we allow, we teach students tools and strategies and also to know how to communicate in a way when they're really feeling like they don't know what to do. So I think that that's really important, and I think it's wonderful. So I'm fully in support of that. And I guess the other question that I have, and I'm just, I know our students take 25 credits.
Mm-hmm.
But the requirement is 20 credits or 22?
20 currently.
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 Okay.
Yes. We're not changing, we're not going to reduce that in this amount of time.
Right.
But the entire state is going to be required to take 20, a minimum of 25, beginning with the graduating class of 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, so they've given the districts enough time.
Right.
To hire people to do what they need to do, because there are schools that 20 was okay.
I just think that it's so hard too, because there's so many required courses that they have to take that scheduling the additional electives makes it.
And you're right, we only have, you know, 28-credit opportunities, right? If you look at seven periods each year, that's all that we have. You could take the, and potentially you could take a couple of semester courses, but in the end, you're still just looking at a max of the 28 credits. And to the point you brought up, that suicide prevention is absolutely critical because for a child to lose hope is devastating.
And parents, you know, there's so many parents that say, I didn't even know my child was struggling. So for, for us to be able to have a part in the health, that class, to just talk about, you know, that aspect of it, I think is really, really important.
And that they're not alone.
They're not alone.
They always think they're alone because you can't read other people's minds, you can't see their heart. So you think that you just can't live another day because of whatever it is you're going through.
Right.
So being able to communicate through that and be resilient because life will be hard. So they need to know that that's okay, and you can still get back on your feet.
And also too, creating a bond within that classroom.
That's huge.
That adds support. I mean, I remember taking a class similar many years ago in high school and bonding with kids in that class my senior year that I would have never really had the chance to. And actually, it's really, I thought was one of my most valuable classes that I took. It was called Self and Others. And I just think that it's a great opportunity to build sort of like an internal bond so that when there's somebody in your class that maybe is struggling, you can reach out. And I just think it's a great added net within the community.
Within the first couple of days of the curriculum, developing norms and how to respect each other are part of those activities to help build that type of trust environment. So that we know for sure. It's not easy to be a teenager and open up.
No, definitely not. So thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is action items. First up is to consider and if appropriate authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $100,000 from the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures for building and repair and replacement of the Washington Library roof. Do I have a motion? Second, okay. We have a motion that's seconded. Any questions, discussions? Colin?
Yeah, I guess Greg and Donovan, what is the, what's the current total in the, in the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures now? Is that it?
That's, is that, yeah.
I just know if anything came out since then. I just know if anything came out since then.
Yeah, $50,000, and we approved at the last board meeting for, or 50 or so.
So we're at roughly like 625, 650, something like that? Anybody know? Oh, in the truck?
We'll be done.
Anybody know?
I've got it.
She's got it, yeah.
Just a second.
Treasure rubber.
The capital non-recurring was at $800,107.60. But the elementary capital expenditure fund, which is, I think, is that what we're talking about here?
I don't know. That's what I'm confused about.
That's not for Washington primary, or we're taking this out of?
No, this is not coming in. I don't believe this is coming in. This is from the Reserve Fund for Capital and Non-Recurring Expenditures. That's actually a diff, that's your $800,000 fund.
That's the big fund.
It's not the elementary fund. Those are specifically delegated projects to elementary schools under the leases.
Just wanted to make sure that was the billion here. So yes, that was the, the total.
So we have, all right, so we have a reserve fund, we have our.
Lease fund.
Element, yeah.
Our lease, but I thought our lease fund was called the Reserve Fund for Capital and Non-Recurring Expenditures.
No.
What's that fund called?
They're two separate.
You have that?
It's called the Elementary Capital Expenditure Fund. It's for the elementary leases.
Okay. So we have, we have the 1% fund.
That's the capital non-recurring.
Oh, that is?
Yes.
Okay, so we're like, we're at probably around 600,000 now? Because we had 800,000, we had to take out 140,000, another 50,000? So we must.
I've got to go to our minutes from the last meeting. What did we take down?
Sorry.
With this, we should be, I think, at, I think, at around 600,000.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was just double-checking before we.
It's the roof repair, the new truck, and now this is approximately 200.
That's what I'm saying. So it goes from eight to about six. I just want to make sure we're not going from like.
Stephanie, you agree?
Yeah, I do agree with that, yeah.
Minus 20.
No, no, no.
Well.
All right, perfect.
We authorized. I don't know if it's been used yet.
Right, but I just thought it was.
It's been encumbered.
Yeah, allocation and that encumbrance.
Allocated, excuse me. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Jim?
I just, when will this work be done? Any idea?
Greg? Or done?
Uh, yeah, I believe, I believe the Washington primary roof is going to be, assuming we accept this contract, they're going to do that, what, in the spring? All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're, go ahead, Alan?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, we're in executive session.